United States of America. To the right. Stand. One big step. Yeah. Here. Away. Up here. For all. I should my best for you. It's my legal law. First section by Mr. Oliver, on favor.
Aye.
Close the test. All right, group of our previous meeting. There's actually a question. If you have any. All right. What's your mind for Oliver? The 45 to 65. Oliver, favor.
Aye.
What's your best unanimous? Okay, and. And Mr. Bradley was absent for that meeting in D S. So what is. All right, approval of tonight's agenda. And discussion.
Conversation.
Okay, approval for the agenda by Mr. Oliver. The 45 to 65. Oliver, favor.
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Oh, business. Special land use. Private county golf cart incorporated. Permanent parcel. Zero eight, one eight. Four five four, zero zero one. Located on the north side of 42 mile road. A half a mile east of Hayes. Question 18, Joseph Argento. Yes. Right.
Thank you. Uh, this is. The whole business title. Sorry, I think there's something about on the. Already heard. Um, but they are some special land use. Uh, again, they're all given from. Uh, what is. Uh, we're going to drive. Um, they are the end unit that we see from there. Um, these golf carts outside. Uh, the number of criteria in the note go through.
Can you speak louder please?
Sure, there's a number of criteria to go through. Uh, to be considered for special land use. I ran through these last time, but I'll go through them again. Uh, what they're seeking is again to use the, the front yard. Uh, to, to display or set up their golf carts. Uh, for the golf cart business that is the end unit within that building. Um, a front yard setback variance was obtained at the Z P A meeting last Thursday. Uh, with three conditions, I was not at the meeting, so I. Heard Mr. Tucker later on what those conditions exactly are. Uh, but so, so long as those conditions are met with variance. Um, it would harmonious with the area it's located in. Uh, it's not likely to contribute any more hazardous conditions than already exist in the area. Uh, it's not anticipated to create any more nuisance that's already in an industrial area. Um, they would be asked to confirm their hours of operation for their outdoor sales area. It's not expected to interfere with or discourage development that area is largely already developed. Uh, and it does relate harmoniously with, with some of the other businesses in the area. As you see in the picture, there's a, a power wash, there's a lot of traffic in the area. Uh, and so the sales of that nature would, would relate to those type of businesses. Uh, it is available for public access and has no impact on. On any of, any of the neighboring properties as far as owning, uh, is concerned. And then lastly, uh, as proposed, it's not anticipated to be. Injurious or detrimental to, to neighboring properties. Uh, so that being said, staff does not object to an approval from you this evening. Uh, and as I mentioned, a variance has been obtained. Uh, so we need to make sure that anything, uh, that maybe approved through you guys. Uh, make sure that they meet all the conditions required with the variance.
All. Certain is that right.
There's a condo associated with it. Now, yes, that's why they were tabled previously, but on those documents. Uh, in your packet showing them. Your condo association. They did obtain that and it is in your packet this evening.
Yes. Yes. Single. A goal. So there's an issue on the way this contract was. He, I don't expect that. Uh, we represent the, uh, rural water field. Initially it was submitted and I pointed out to. There you got. That was not. But was. You know, it's this one. I get mixed up because maybe you're on the same. Uh, portion. Uh, so last time you were here, uh, there was an issue that I raised. That's because there's a homeowners association and he is requesting a special land use on a personal property. Which he did not own. So, um, we did not see the master plan. I understand what was committed or accomplished with it. Since then, the master plan was submitted. Uh, in reviewing it, the authority of the condo owners. He's with. He's did a documentation that, that more than the authority of the. That one that all done. And then this is the latter on positive. So given that information, I feel uncomfortable. Association assigned on credit. Um, I represent the same. But for the field, they approve the variance for this. After all, I'm. Hello. The, uh. What if this. Well, uh, she sells out moves. Does this stay with the owner or would that, would that start a whole? Yeah, let's say sold out tomorrow. Yeah, so this special rent land use will only be. As the. They just. They have a. Sure. So what he thought, he couldn't. Go to a new buyer and say, I got this. It'll follow you. The first back company to progress. I'm just gonna question if you can call for a. Box of. By a. Um. Part of. Big. I know. I'd be like. Did have variance. In, variance in that language. Especially when just. I talked to Mr. uh. Skrull about that. Uh, for sure, yes. I'm. Yes. So two more. Uh, we have to. One, uh, at that. Even that anything we're not. Make sure that no total of their own. Those confusion. Uh, Mr. Lloyd was pretty confident there was enough to make a contingent that it was sufficient signatures. Um, we did make a contingent on special land use, so special land use not approved. Speaking of variance also. Uh, and the last one. And just what. We're not correcting periods for any structures. Um, here. Please. Um. Come to. Just game seven.
My name's Joe Sortino, address 51073, Milano Drive, McComb. You're welcome.
One being, uh, there's a hardship. Uh, because. You can't. Stay. Here. Parts. Uh. Can't see. Parts. In front area. Later. That hardship or would. Further explain.
Yeah, I'll explain a little bit better. So basically, we have a small facility, you don't know, you know the square footage. We like the location, we're locked in a lease of another two, two years. Or I would plan on moving somewhere. I like McComb, I have a couple of businesses in McComb. Utilize.
We have the whole building.
I have the entire end unit. Yes, and then I also have the unit next door that is filled with rentals. So we got that just for storage. There's no more units available there, so I store all the carts for rentals there. Then we just go out periodically on the weekends and stuff like that. That is correct. Okay? That is. That is correct. And the issue, of course, the east side, where three years ago, they told me I couldn't park on the grass. Let's convert it to rocks. We did that, it was a city gentleman that came around, we did, we never had an issue. But anyways, I have about 300 some square feet in back with all the tools and everything. We have two to three mechanics. We work on a golf cart each. There is no room to keep them golf carts, the new ones that we sell. Or any existing ones used. There's no room anywhere. I put them in back, which would be on the north side. All that, we have a trailer there that we deliver carts daily. It's 20, 20 feet long. So that's there, if I put carts there, the U P S drivers and all them would hit it. I have nothing on the south side, that's front parking, I will eliminate my parking from my customers. But right now, we're using that, but customers are even coming in like, where do we park? So they're parking in the street now. So I'm not really displaying them, you can call it a display. My concern is. Keeping them there when we're repairing the golf carts. That's all we're doing, and we love the location. And someone asked a couple of weeks, well, why don't you move? I can't, I'm locked into a two year lease. And it is a hardship. Because we're trying to deal with it now and I'm losing parking and everything. I have no parking for my customers, I have all the signatures, eight out of 10 signatures. Marie that actually came in here. Signed it, and she's the president of our association. We're all friends in there, we're just a little community over there and we're just doing business.
All right, it's fine. And. Um. I like. But, uh. Uh, those. Periods, there are restrictions. Uh, we. Uh, with the score.
I agree. I don't storm.
Hasn't changed as well.
Yes, so basically, Marie, if you read the letter, do you have the one letter that's actually stated from our president? Of our association, Marie. It's not going to be grandfather clause in or anything, once I leave, this is done. And basically, nobody has anything to say over there, and you talk, this is not outside storage, you want outside storage and I'm not. Being smart, behind us, there is so much outside storage in McComb County, there is so, I have photos of everything, but I didn't want to utilize it, I just wanted to come up here and keep operating my business, that's all I'm doing. But do you talk about all steel behind us for years? Piled up, you can't even see the building, that's outside storage. Granite outside storage across the street.
It's 20, 20.
It's off the Milano, yes, not off the main, and not off of 23, the main, yes.
Front PR. Basically. Um, and. You're including. New, air cars.
No.
Correct.
New carts there.
Just new.
I'm working on carts and putting, they're new, and there's could be one, two. Sometimes three, that's it. And it's against the building, pretty much. It's a rocked area, the whole entire landscape now is rock.
It's. Eighteen year old. Air and bulk part of this. Uh, so. I have the size of. Move that. That. Of eight months or I'm hoping to be there overnight, where you hope to go in at night.
There always go back in and when we're done working on them, I would never leave one out, you know what's gonna happen? For sure. I mean, I got locks on the trailers, I gotta put them on the wheels, everything gets stolen over there. That. All for sure.
It is failed. Well. So. And explains that.
Correct, the front we're looking at, when, if you asked anybody that came up visibly and looked at that building, and I know what you're gonna say, but the front is facing south, that's the front facing 23. Right behind the car, that's where everybody parks in the front. This looks like a side profile, that's what it looks like to the vast majority of people. Yes, I'm putting them carts there, we're working on the carts, when they're done, we call the customers, they come and pick them up, or we take that trailer we spoke about earlier. And we deliver the cart to the customer, bring them back, they sit up there, customers will come in. Will bring them right down and they'll take them for a ride, they bring them back. By five o'clock, 10 to 5, them carts are brought into a facility where we are working on the original carts. Nothing is left outside, nothing. No flags, no nothing, no for sale signs, there's nothing out there like that.
All for.
That. That is correct. Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. Thank you.
Repression parts that you are repairing. And you're. Um, you refer to new parts. Screwed new parts, always wear repaired parts, waiting for someone to figure it out. But the supplier, hopefully, is not just storing it. Not necessarily current on. It's like. Different things. Help clarify. Do that, try this out, 100%. Parts that you're repairing and stores like.
Basically, when we repair the cart, we leave it in the facility, there's no room, I don't want the. Older carts that come in, sitting out there, just doesn't look good. Looks like a graveyard. It does, I don't want that. If I'm gonna have anything displayed, and it's not really displayed, but if it's gonna be displayed, where I have the room to work in the facility and back. They're gonna be brand new carts, because they look nice. People drive by and they pull in. The visibility we get. I can get where I park in them parking spots, where I told you on the south end. Because people that are pulling out of John's Car Wash, it looks like it'd run right into the cart, they're in our parking spot, but it works, but it's taking the parking from our customers. Nothing old and beat up, no. New carts. Correct, the customers that bring their carts in are warranty work, we work on inside the building. We don't have enough room to put them carts, and I'm requesting to stay outside. Or since we've been going through this for a couple of months, then we're in a parking spot right now, so we can work on used carts and warranty work. When that's done, we leave the used carts inside, we don't add anything, we don't put them out there. That is correct. Yes. You're welcome.
So. I should my Mr. Oliver, thank you, I might need you to. On favor. Passes. If you'd like to speak on this item, you have. Come up in podium, you have a gang address, you have four minutes to speak. It will collect all of your comments and questions. And answer on. Um, anyone that. Special thing. Right, Johnny Ball. Well, then, I guess. At 6:50, we will. Be the motion by Mr. Oliver. Support. Supported by Mr. Spadaro. To close the public question, Oliver, favor. Aye, aye. Motion passes unanimously. And then we'd be, we'd be in motion to approve. The special. Right? Good question. For potential. Ten minutes, we hold eight. Two. Uh, you said we had here, you have eight. Eight signatures out of this. That's correct. Is that all eight?
Eight signatures, we have, that's correct, plus Marie. I couldn't get the other two individuals, they're on vacation. The vast majority. Yes. She's actually not here, she, can I show you her letter? Oh, you saw, oh yeah, yes, you're right, yeah. No, Mr. Leone's not here, and Rick, my Tony, no.
Then someone here. Local. Company. Five. There's. Home ship.
You're asking me both units combined?
Yeah.
Um. Um, them are not the largest units in there, but I would say my end unit is probably the largest unit in there, probably have.
Yes, just 105%.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Question. Just clarification. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Are with units and building, so all of these signatures are from people that own units. Name building.
Correct.
There's no one that has given, uh, who will. That own any of the other buildings.
Yes. Marie.
Other building.
Uh, your, our building has 10 units, you're talking about the entire building, they're owned by 10 different individuals, I can't say 10. Mr. Leone owns, I think, two, Rick and.
Right?
Correct.
I'm talking about other buildings.
Yes, Robert, Robert does not, on the same street?
Next building.
That's not even our community, that's a totally different, yes, that's, yes.
That's all. A long. Have. And you in this. Have any. And my theory is that we're going to. Nine of our request. Uh, for there is. Or two. No, there's no.
Can I say something?
Aye.
Can I say something? There's no building that's even equivalent to that that would be able to store, it's totally different, this building is unique in a way. It has that little piece that I'm utilizing. There's not another, another building on that street that you could park anything, it just want to work. It's not made like that, it has totally landscape when you look all the way down, and the ones that do face the west on the other side are parking lots. There's no, I mean, I've ne, I've been here nine years, I've never had an issue. Never, we're just trying to operate a business. Not doing anything wrong. That, I have no idea.
Yeah. So. Open.
Big, yeah.
And then. I have a clutter. I have a clutter. And so. That, that might concern, is this, this, this allows that. It makes new parts. Uh, but then I'm gonna have one or something else.
Well, here's one, yeah. Correct, we're not, so basically, Leone's owned the other buildings as well. Or I used to be, right across the street, that's a parking lot. They sell trailers, they sell cars out there, they sell mini bikes. They're there all the time. The other building down the street is owned by Rick. He's a plumber, I have a electrician, you know Rick and Tony, they're out, they own the other building down the street. The lady next door to me could never want to display anything with all the steel all over the place? That you can't even see her building? She has all landscaping, you wouldn't want to put anything, you'd have to put the stuff in the landscape. The only other building. Would be the one straight across the street. And if I'm correct. I think it's. I don't want to say any names, but that, that's all individually owned as well. And that's all landscaped. If, no, it was never landscaped. No. It was just burnt, yeah, no. From grass, it was never landscaped, there were never any bushes or anything, no one ever really took care of it. There was half, like 60% grass. It was mostly weeds, I actually, it, I made a big improvement, and we've heard it from a lot of individuals. We really did. Come by, take a look at, it's really nice. Anybody else? Okay.
In the. Um. I can make that one. On the. Motion. Also. Incorporated. Okay. One eight. Four five four, there's. Zero zero one. Okay, that on the north side, 23 mile road. That model is. Question 18. That, that is. You. People. I. Pushing. 45 to 40. If you have any. People. So. Yeah. Oliver? Yes. Yes. Ben. Mr. Hard. Yeah. Back on board. Yes.
I. I really do, thank you. Thank you.
200. You're donating requests from age eight. Residential one family urban arbor. Glen Arbor Building allowed. Permanent parcel, zero eight, two one, one zero zero, zero one seven. Located on the south side of 43 mile road. Quarter mile east of Romeo Bling. Question 21, Glen Arbor Building.
This. And is currently vacant property. On his own agriculture, and they're seeking to get a rezon to our one or single family residential. Uh, the. Existing conditions, as I said, it, it's currently vacant property. Uh, it has been used for agricultural purpose in the past. There is a township pump station, uh, in the corner of the property, it's also adjacent to. What was previously the Amonti Sory School, is, is currently vacant, out of business. And on the. And on the east side, it is a residential subdivision similar to what they're seeking, and that subdivision already has a stub street into uh, this proposed rezoning property. The master plan would support this, uh, it is master planned for residential use, three minutes per acre which would match property to the east. Uh, and it is again adjacent to public or semi-public uses on the west as well, as well as the Clinton River. Um, there might be some flooding issues with the river, that's something that if they go ahead and develop this, they would have to figure out. Uh, it worked through, uh, but that would not be anything related to the rezoning of this property. Uh, requesting, as I said, that the requested zone aligns with the master plan, uh, we are recommending approval at this time, as it does align. It's approved tonight, it's simply changes the building, what's allowed to go on the property, and it was being built in all shovels and ground. Uh, they would then have to figure out how they want to develop it, obviously. They would have to come forward with the site plan from that, where you guys seek approval for site plan, then they would go through the engineering process. As I mentioned, there's potential for some flood issues with the river, that process would handle that as well as water and sanitary and all the other utility type issues. And they would get their final approval. To start building, so they have, they have a number of steps ahead of them, uh, should this be approved.
Right, yeah, Valley five one four three five Industrial Drive, McComb Township, Michigan. Josh, the property is approximately nineteen acres, and on the east side, it's a, it butts an existing subdivision, has a stub street coming in off of provincial. Um, on the west side, it backs up to the, basically the, basically the middle, yeah. Basically the middle branch, is this even turned on? The middle branch of the, uh, Clinton River, it backs up to on the west side. Uh, north side fronts twenty three mile road, um, the right away has already been dedicated for the twenty three mile road expansion, that I think is going to happen next year. Um, uh, what we're being told, and to the south, it butts, uh, half a subdivision and more R one zoning, and the piece of property is, uh, that's located in Chippewa Valley Schools, so it's a, it's a nice piece of property, it's going to make a real nice subdivision. There'll be several lots backing up to the shelf of the middle branch, and, uh, just gonna, it's gonna be a real nice subdivision, it'll have its own entrance coming off of twenty three mile road, and it'll be connected to the stub street to the east. And, um, all the utilities are there, water, sewer, um, water sanitary, storm will be, um, outletted into the middle branch. Um, and we've got some flood plain to deal with, it does, it doesn't flood, the property does not flood, but there is floodway on the property that we'll be avoiding. Um, there's a few acres of that that we have to avoid. A, a normal site like this will accommodate probably about fifty seven to sixty homes, but I believe that the layouts we've got, it's going to be in the mid forties, probably closer to forty five, forty six lots based on, uh, the acreage we have to leave, uh, alone for the floodways. It'll, it'll be a single family subdivision, but it'll be a site condo, it will not be a platted sub. Yeah, we've, we've gotten away from the platted subs, it's just the timeline takes forever at this date, so. No, probably just the two features, because it'll be a four base system now with the, with the new, uh, bylaws with the, with the drain office, so though, you'll have two really nice landscape basins in there. Yes, that'll all be taken care of. The landscape, the landscaped entrance, all that will all be accommodated with the bylaws. Right. Their lots will be, the, the ones that back up to the middle branch shelf will be deeper, those will be deeper, the rest of them will be the, they'll be the seventy by one twenties, all, all abide by the seventy by one twenty. Yes, we're gonna, we'll have a, a stub road coming off of provincial, there'll be two cul-de-sacs internally, and then there'll be an entrance off twenty three mile road. Yeah, we'll be, we'll be in for site plan approval, probably within the next couple of months. There'll be another meeting, yeah, right. Yeah, we, I'm sure that'll be mandated, we'll have to bring all the construction off, you're gonna wanna, you're gonna wanna minimize any impact on the existing neighbors. And we, we go through that all the time, some, some subdivisions, there's just no choice when it's in a, when it's a, a second, a second or third phase of an existing sub. This one will have its own entrance off twenty three mile road, so we'll direct most, all the, as much as we possibly can police it, we'll get all the construction traffic through off a twenty three mile road. I can't promise that there might not be somebody that just gets lost and turns on the wrong road and they go down, they come down off, uh, the road off of provincial, but we will direct all contractors and trades to come off the twenty three mile road.
Okay, my name is Scott LaGirante, I live at five zero six six zero Romeo Plank. And, uh, I own a piece of property, three acres, uh, directly south of the shopping center. And on my, uh, east end of my property would butt up against what is called the subject property. I have a known property on both sides of the river, I own, uh, maybe a half, three quarters of an acre on the other side of the river, and then two and a quarter acres on the west, uh, side of the river. The two concerns I have are the three, and one of them's going to be, I live in Michigan, six months out of the year, so as you get into the planning of this, I won't be around, I'll be someplace else, I, I won't be back till, um, March or so, but, uh, so a lot could happen before I come back to talk about this, but the issues I'm concerned about is flooding, and I guess that might not be addressed today, but somebody was in there clearing that property out about three weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago, with a tractor or some kind of hedge cutter. What they did is, I have a nice green space between, because I own that property on the other side of the river. I have a nice green space that blocks me from the subdivision that's on the far side of that property. It would block me from whatever they build on that property, but somebody took a D eight tractor and drove up to the river. Encroaching on my property and just flattened a big swath of, uh, you know, whatever was there, growth, weed, tree, bush, whatever, now I can see across into the other subdivision. I'd hate to see somebody encroach on my property and tear down that green area or that green space as they clear out that property, so I, I make that one of my concerns. That somebody just doesn't come in there and plow down my trees and my green space that would block that subdivision. And the other issue is, since they allowed that shopping center to be built about twenty years ago, my property floods a lot more than it did previous to the shopping center being built, and I'm wondering if they built a lot of pavement and roofs and all that, am I going to get more flooding, is, is it going to be rained into the river and more flooding, so those are my two concerns, or the other concern, like I say, is whoever drove the equipment onto my property and flattened my green space, I don't, I don't know if that's to be addressed with this gentleman, or if he knows about who drove that tractor, who was doing the cleaning out of the property, but I'd like to not see that when I come back all flattened and gone, because I wasn't there to object to it.
Five oh four six seven Riverside Drive. The last gentleman, basically what we're talking about is the flooding situation, and I have photos here, guys. Last year, even with the water pump, still floods the area, and we, I would like to show you photos if possible, take a look at it, or. We're on the other side of this, uh, property, if you take a look at the pictures. Every time a torrential rain falls, it's constantly flooding the whole area. And that's my concern, when I had a survey guy come out there, when he's just doing a survey for the land, he, I asked him about it, and he says, he's shaking and said, this guy is not a young guy, this guy's an older guy telling me that it should, there's going to be a single home, uh, dwelling, it should have a basement in there, so I'm wondering why he said that. In other words, just, he's not sure this should be, uh, having homes in there, so that's main concern about this, uh, I've lived here, we've lived here twenty five years. Okay, I wish I was taking pictures back then. Now you see the picture, when you take a look at it, you're going to see nothing has changed, when it's torrential rain comes down, it floods the whole area and it goes continuous towards south. Ask my neighbor, Ed, that's my neighbor, Ed, uh, Mr. Teller, and we've had it every, every year, it doesn't matter. Um, if water's going to continue to go, and, and it does come back, I feel sorry for those people who's going to live along that, unless you have a A one plan to take care of the situation, because I would ask you folks right there, absolutely take a look at it, do you feel safe and secure to build a home over there? That's what I want to ask it, after take a look at that, and that's basically what I want to ask you, because that's, uh, very important to should it's kept it right, like the way it is, uh, with something. But that's my main concern, is the flooding situation, and, uh, I don't know, I, I don't like it, uh, but, uh, hopefully you can take a look at that and decide yourself. Uh, oh, awesome, it's going to cause more havoc. If you're only having one outlet to come out to this main street, there're going to be anything at twenty three mile. Well, I'm hearing sirens every day, okay, so you're talking, you're talking more accidents and more, it's tightness and it's too close to Romeo Plank. But it's up to you, I just don't agree on this, uh, unless you have a master plan to avoid the flooding situation, it's going to happen. And for those that are going to buy these homes, wish them well, I mean, for those that live on the back of that, on the other side. Um, I, I don't know what to say there, if they're going to say, um, hopefully there's no, no major problems, that's what we're gonna that's what we're gonna see here, I'm telling you, it's probably going to happen. So, that's basically, it's just a flooding situation.
Okay, so then after. What's going to happen, you see the pictures there with the flood that we got just last year, and it's been worse in the previous years. What's going to happen when we get a heavy rain? And that water is going to spill over into our yard. And our yard is pushed back. For like a hundred and twenty feet, our backyard is a hundred and twenty feet from the drainage ditch which backs up then to the Clinton River, the plant, the branch. All the houses down from my house, their, their property is closer to the water. They're going to get flooded out, just like my husband was saying, that the houses that are, uh, on lower levels. They're going to get flooded, and it's going to be a bad situation. And, uh, in nineteen ninety eight, we already had a sewer flood in our basement. Yes, and, um, McComb Township ended up having to pay for it because they were negligent. Um, and then if there's an outlet, another outlet from out to twenty three mile, it takes me by ten minutes just to get out of my subdivision, making a left-hand turn, and if he wants to put another street making out to twenty three mile, that is going to be one accident city, and twenty three mile Romeo Plank is already a bad, bad area for accidents, it's already a bad, bad, uh, intersection. I just totally disagree with all this, on top of all the flooding that we're going to have.
Um, so. She already touched on traffic, um, I guess I don't have to repeat it, but coming off of twenty three in Romeo Plank, there's already one lane merging into single lane. And another subdivision, ours is the first subdivision to the right, adding another one prior to that is just disaster. Um, like she said, it takes us about five to ten minutes sometimes to exit that, so I have no idea how construction can come off of twenty three and there's trucks blocking, but that's another thing I want to point out is that most of us who bought houses there knew that behind us was an agricultural zone, and there were not going to be homes built. So now we're going to have homes in our backyard, essentially, when half of the reason we bought the homes, um, would be because there was nobody behind that, and it was agricultural zone and not residential zone.
Bell and Keller five zero four three five Riverside Drive, McComb four zero four four. Um, my question is, on the south end of the property, there's a tree line. Is there a chance that, you know, if, if this were to go forward, could that should be preserved?
There, there's a small triangle.
Oh, no, I've talked about, we'll talk about everything at the end. Oh, no, I, I was just wondering if on the south end of the property, the fence line could be, you know. Anyone else? And. And supported by Mr. Brown. Call favor. Would you pass it?
Yeah, I guess the first one I'll mention is the. Entrance to twenty-three mile, so first of all, again, we're talking about rezoning, there's no site plan in front of us. I know he did mention that he intends to have entrance on twenty-three mile. That is something that the county would approve or disapprove. They control the road, so whether they're allowed to put one there or not, it would be up to the county, not to us, certainly not to the planning commission. With regards to flooding, again, that will be handled later phase when we're going through engineering. Uh, Mr. Echabelli has involved a number of subdivisions within the township and he's probably aware that. Can get in there and find out what can be built on, uh, that's always a possibility. Um, I'm sure they'll do as due diligence and I know our, our engineering staff here at the township and. Some of the consultants that they use as well, uh, will. Will look at this very closely and make sure that it's sustainable and if it's not, then be approved through engineering, so. Um, and there were some comments about the shopping plaza. Being built and then subsequently causing flooding. I wasn't here when that happened, but I'm looking at the aerial, you can see behind you, there's no detention on that, so I'm sure that that was built. At a time that, uh, regulations and requirements were different, they weren't required to put detention. That's something that is required now, uh, so they will be, if, if it is buildable, they would be required to put. Detention basin, which are our large, um, light basins, uh, to contain and control. Excess water during large rain events. The property right now doesn't have that, it's uncontrolled, so when it rains, that water just goes wherever the lowest point is. You know, if they get through engineering and they find that they can do those detention basins sufficiently and control the water. That's how they control it to, to keep it out of neighbors' backyards and so, you know, other subdivisions' backyards, so. And that's all stuff that we look at through the engineering process.
Question, uh, related to wetlands as well, are there wetlands?
There is wetland, flood plain, what is called floodway, so you automatically got wetlands when there's floodway. There's the south, it would be the southwest corner. Um, that, there's a, there's a triangle there on the southwest corner that goes, uh, probably about. Two hundred feet, um, east on the south property line, then it comes back down. Approximately a forty-five, sixty-degree angle, the, the corner there where the floodway.
I think it's a missed perception. With people that, that move into a new subdivision. They see agriculture and they're like, oh, they're near one. And I'm sure when there's suddenly lots, solid lots of homes, they're like. Yeah, the body never saw that coming, but. Play with that, that comes as well, that's not, yeah, it's gonna stay there forever.
These are our maps. That would be the zoning map, the future land. So the zoning map, yes, they, when they bought their house, they could see that it was zoned agriculture behind them. Uh, and that, that was updated on the township website, it's updated often and there will be areas like this if they're approved that. And that gets updated, updated. Future land use map, which is part of the township master plan, which is. You know, recommended for approval by this planning commission and adopted by the township board. We have the, the future land use map in. That shows what is planned ultimately for that property. In two thousand eight, this property was already planned to be residential. And it remained planned in the future land use map. In two thousand twenty-two, uh, adoption of the master plan happened in the spring, so. At, prior to two thousand eight, I don't know, I wasn't here, I don't know when it was. Planned for residential initially, but it has been for a number of years. That's what's indicated on this map here, that's actually a snippet from our master plan app and it shows. Single family, three dwelling units, an acre. Uh, the subject site is what the master plan for this area.
And during the, there. Correct. So, and thus, flooding, um. Anytime. I'm a farmer. I'm going to be a company of the night. Farmers, they tired, provide their property to be developed because there's buyers waiting to buy their homes. That's why they. Always search. So units, there's agriculture, maybe the farmers, but it's, it's like that. Thank you, John.
Yes, um. So then, your acting family, answer. Thanks for your questions. But now we understand that's, that's the first, I would. Having extended work. And, and, I would call it, I'm passionate.
Yes, I, I believe it's already been, been awarded. The twenty-three mile road construction.
Next question, this is for Romeo, the township. Well, the twenty-three mile road is a better part of. What power? Just to go township, home township, ex county township, is a five-way road and step. Romeo Plank, now a part of the road, yeah. So, I don't know if it's water. They have some dollars out there. So, eight, it's late for. The twenty-three mile road is currently in the middle of, of, of location projects and expansion by. Two to five months. They started at North Avenue, recovered, probably going to build, recover, hide and run, do the entire. So, kind of progressively, though, I don't, I don't need the entire stretch of my money to get it done. Once, but next year sounds right, it's eight up to two, but it has to be between two. I know they want to get it done as soon as possible and the other thing is, um, as you well know, regardless of what's going through between. Uh, twenty-two mile road and also, um, twenty-five, so that will hopefully be alleviating. Some of that traffic as well that was congestion and proceeding on township. That's just, that's. That's a heavy topic. Residential community, both sides of twenty-three mile road and has both expansion. Projects that are bitted and. Starting highly different people. Um, that will definitely be, no, we, I think it makes a difference for all the existing. Developments, including perhaps what is impending. Here to see the public agenda. Take that through, for, 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 as I said. Something we desperately need in this community, probably all of us, before this, before that. This township. Be a factor. I agree enough with this agenda, I have all of these, our official, we try to value that. We have, there are, obviously. There are even. Any final?
I. Uh, I would say that we, one, uh, we started the role of mission. Be. A. The plan is, uh. Everything waits until, they're not going to wire. That really, that would hurt. Uh, the other is, uh, in place to, aren't you saying, um. Element. Our, uh, the, uh, the, the. That's a requirement now and. The preliminary, uh, when the. Both have to take up the volume, uh. So that we don't get like, uh. That wasn't done fast. Certainly something that is. Probably. It's something they have to be, they'll, they'll. That's something that will be taken. As. Help you. By. Being.
Sure, I just had a couple of things to say, um, obviously we are at a zoning station. It's difficult for us to. Stay with the rezoning and all those other things, uh, that all of us completely want to talk about, um. I'm mostly going to resist except for two things, at a time since we get to one, it's not a common life. I love the Detroiting course, or landowners, something, something, um, landscape is part of it, we are. Actually appropriate people, make sure they're held. vegetation on adjacent properties, this. Full of those, I know you did a lot of work in community and I'm trying to tell this, but. I'm glad you all said, uh, be a good day for all of us, a good, good way to start. Appreciate you taking note of that. Um, similarly, the, uh, street line, I know you have started to answer the one resident. I think the best thing for, uh, the evening. Reason itself, I think. I appreciate that, and probably. You'd be sooner in the process. That's the only thing I want to mention is that I have a planning issue a lot now. We have a large parcel. Everyone's concerned about water. No parcel in this township that we have, that, that, there's some contamination of water and traffic. Um, everyone on this board is, we all live here. Um, we all drive roads, I know how long it takes me to get out onto my main road every day. I walk through subdivisions, water. Roads are different, because they're a chicken and egg situation, but twenty-three is getting bigger. It's actually one of the more prioritized roads, so I feel better about twenty-three than other places. Um, as far as water goes, um. As others have alluded to, the last four to eight years, standards for water retention have gone considerably up. So you don't see it here tonight, not seeing every property, but. The, the requirements for handling water on land is way higher than it was a decade. And, and I don't know that I can properly describe to you how much higher it is. Um, that being said, you still get concerns every time a parcel comes in, I try to follow up. When new parcels go in and the water is engineered, you don't hear complaints about it. Matter of fact, there's typically classical complaints after. Pour water and you thought it wasn't personal. Right now, most big pieces of land are prepared, supply, no water, make a call. When an engineer goes through and works on how to handle water, if they do it, which in this case they will. It typically, not only is not neutral, it actually improves the spirit, so. Probably won't help any of you looking at this, I recognize it's a parcel adjoining your house, I, I recognize the concern. I'll just say, I, I do go back to these things, I do talk about waters, I care about it, I'm really. And pretty much invariably, the situation gets better. Um, and that's part of the reason that, even though it's not within our control handling water, that's not our burden. I feel confident passing it on to the other departments of the township, knowing that they will do a good job. Ultimately, even if it is scary on the front, it does serve rather well, so. May not help you tonight, but just keep that in mind as we go through the process, uh, there is a process, it does work well. This is not in a vacuum, up here, pay attention to it, try to make sure of the. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman. Through this whole, uh, you, you, I believe, the township. Who represents, who, who, showing this, uh, from, 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 eighty. For residential, one family, uh, I will watch the line, uh, as well. Planning department has lost the vision.
If I have more, I will second that motion. During, and, um. The platform.
Yes.
Heard it.
Yes.
Probably.
Yes.
Yes. Up here. There are, uh. I would.
So, yes.
Alright, then, before you ask the again. Right.
I want a question.
Okay, I'm the public question. Yes. During one minute of lights out, so if anyone has your back, uh, if you're here for the next item. Sorry. Session of time for preliminary plan and. States, permanent parcel, zero eight, zero eight, two zero zero, zero zero nine. Located on the south side of twenty-five mile road. Quarter mile deep to Romeo Plank. Section eight, Joshua, King, Jefferson.
The chairman of the commission. As you mentioned, that part, we've located on the south side of twenty-five mile, about four miles of the, right. There's a, in a full site plan, that came reporting, uh, that you all approved, uh, previously. At this time, they are seeking the, 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 um, preliminary plan. I know Mr. Bentley has questions earlier about the status of something that, uh, one of the officials is here. Uh, in the presence, but I, I do believe, after talking with Mr. Bentley, that we confirmed with the engineering department. They were recently within the S ones, there's no approval by engineering, so they are being, uh, uh, cheap going forward. But this is the preliminary plan, so they keep through the whole process, so they will be back in front of you with. Final plans, so you need to give a preliminary plan extended, so that they can come in front of you with. I believe this is the first one, good for, for instruction. That's right.
Well, if you're naming it.
My name is Bill Thompson from Seabreeze Lainer. Address is one seven zero zero one, nineteen mile road, Clinton Township, four eight oh three eight. I'm here representing Mr. Attali today. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Quick thing, we're, right, and, especially the time, uh, for the, preliminary plan, that's in space located at, right, is two zero zero, it's pretty, it's alive. Um, we feel like we're finding space to act and draw a position to, for your permanence, uh, for the period of time. I'm here, so if you'll say, and if I'm, sort of, mentally. Definitely be, be favorable. Uh, I feel, yes. Probably.
Yes.
Heard it.
Yes.
File form.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Time to, uh, next item, public comment, I'm now the chairman. I'm, uh, speak, I'm now the chairman. This is your name and address, and then here, for you. Tell her, right? Alright, we'll close the public hearing, this will lie to commissioner, that is. Yes, Paul.
Barns holding. And award winning.
Award winning.
A lot of that. And uh I was also on the down there. I am so proud to be part of this. There we want to do really hard to consider the president, the college. You know, you deal with every ground plate and I hope by what experience with us, I can be asked to give all of you.
And I refer with the award winning. Absolutely. But they're all involved in the process. So everybody served with kudos and yeah, we were selected uh for a award from the area of association. Uh, for our RLC and I recognized October in planning conference, uh, the chief of conference, the uh, Dec. nine. Any other questions?
Just go back to these. I think in the history of the home township, we never had a board. Right. Has this managed?
Not that I'm aware of. Little hand. Um it's playing and uh the test. A lot of there. Okay. As we find you around. The trendy. Say I saw Mr. Spurro phone up today. Sort of like fast, uh, he actually had to randomly speak to get a room today. So uh, might actually have an extra room. So. Anyone else?
All right, um, that was one of the things I wanted to bring up, but I also wanted to bring up, um, you know, it's fair for those in my goal. Wedding plans, you know. It took a bunch of people to regale at twenty-two mile and days. And if you haven't eaten them, it is just a very daring, nice experience. And I believe trying to get residential in over thirty, then now we had to wait till seven thirty and a little bit longer. Kudos to one of our residents. It's a twenty-two mile and um it's about eight. All right, home township board trustee, Lizon Up. Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. I think you have to get important. One, the entire day, the whole bird in time. Everything uh from township to dancing, calling, on the birthday is he allows business to put, to donate money. Or like this day, somebody wants to donate this. Very hard for us to take that money. Put it in from now running to this, they take five percent. It's advanced uh on the we get only five partners. So it's kind, it's kind of interesting. But for us, we got a lot of business that we want. So then the corporate, how can we sell them that they're going to be five oh one? Because this five oh one needs to type that to uh own money. And for you. Very much. Yes. Not only that, um, he had a had a local restaurant, home township, they were assistant. They were giving away the car get harassment. And that lady, picture of fifteen or sixteen. Jumped right in the action. It's fantasy theater, so I don't ask you come. And uh, we had her come to the court. Good time. It was probably nicer than the youth that didn't stand there and go, what do I do? The young lady just jumped right back. And uh, I, I just felt afraid. He had a wagon. She had other families. But Well. And then it became fifteen year old.
Yeah, yeah, today.
Don't be bad as far as depression. So, I would add. I'm good. The CBA ladies, uh, as you're talking.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I should have very little related to CBA. Very important to bring up this. CBA related, also planning was related. Uh, and that is just that last week, uh, town's had an election. Being this board and the CBA board, planning department doing very well, presented. Election was so part of the county, so she was a part of the township, but I'm sure she was very busy that day. Um, multiple members of the CBA worked, uh, on actually self, I heard. Give her word. Um, James Fox, uh, got shut into this group for the day working on the assets report. So kudos to Josh, not many people who went up and sit through that. They, they know I was here at about ten thirty uh, out in Milwaukee, moving front and receiving board. And I, I saw them at the table that are finishing up the end of day problems. Kudos, Josh was in here. I'm actually plundering some more script data normal last few years. Proud about where our association does. Everyone, which is in and very well collection. I think it says a lot for the numbers of board. Part of the planning department, a lot of people work hard to make sure they got done, got done well. And citizens are correctly broadcasting. Plunge shot, everybody departed. All of the township, we all should be good. In England today. That was the beginning. That was the end of the day. And so I was meant to be fifteen when you're smiling at it. So how is the party good to do? Um, planning department. A couple things. So, yes, I was here for the election. I was here. A lot of love and very little but um, very interesting. Running experience, speaking up, we love those checks and balances during our election process. We have to do three things wrong by one vote and was paid for another hour and, and found where the errors were. Um, and they had to do with uh, a ballot being locked in an envelope instead of pulled out and get scanned. I got alcohol. There's so many different levels of checks and balance process that was very easy. Figure out where something went wrong and find them out and get them counted. Um, it really makes you uh appreciate the process and realize how difficult it, it would really be uh, to have some interruption or, or interference in that process. It would be found out on many, many levels uh before it ever left the township, let alone with any higher level. So, um, another thing, uh, you've probably noticed the last few meetings, you've got these round uh microphones in front of you. Those are microphones picking up your voices for the recording. Had a issue with the CBA meeting last Thursday. Uh, we lost uh the audio of the recording after only about eleven or twelve minutes. The button in the middle of that is a mute button. If one of us pushes it, we're all muted. Apparently that's what happened to the CBA last Thursday. Uh, so if you see that light turn on red in the future, know that we're stop, you can be that on that is being captured uh by our video camera. Go forward until we have a, a permanent solution of how we're going to report these meetings. We're getting up notes. I'm getting the most, we're taking a lot of notes. David and Melissa are compiling their notes and Rachel's gonna for the record tomorrow. That, I guess, that means you know that. This meeting, which was supposed to be last Tuesday, obviously election day. What that means is we have another meeting next Tuesday. So, I don't want anybody to forget. You know, regularly this bill meeting next Tuesday. I believe they'll have one. A hundred percent votes. I was only part of the absentee portion, uh, and I can say yes, a hundred percent of them were accounted for. And I want to say it was it was just under twelve thousand votes for absentee. And I also uh appreciate your, your shout out for the restaurant reality, I think is how it was pronounced. Uh, I, I went to the county department. I saw Mr. Oliver there and I saw others there. Uh, and, and tried to go to that restaurant and it was too crowded to get in that night. So, uh, apparently it is a very good restaurant. I've not been yet, but uh apparently is a very good restaurant because it's always All right, closing to a judge. Supported by Mr. Ralph, supported by Mrs. Smith, all in favor.
I
Anyone opposed? Mr. Pacey, you have a fifty-four.